Coming to you straight from the Rio Grande. And beyond, and beyond. Broadcasting to the four corners of the globe. So grab your seat, your coffee, or your sundowner.
Okay, everybody, here we go.
On point, as always. This is Gloves Off. Gloves Off.
So when I was working on Selena, the series for Netflix, um, to play the role of Abraham Quintanilla, I put on a specific amount of weight, which I was fine doing, but also realizing it could be difficult to get that weight off. I got back into my physical regimen with James Leha, but, um, I was still having trouble with just those last amounts. And that's when I got to meet Arturo from Laredo Medical Weight Loss Clinic. And just the products that he gave me kind of put me over the edge. Feel great about myself.
We're back at Gloves Off, and today have a great guest, city councilwoman Melissa Sierra. How we doing?
Good, good, good morning.
It's a pleasure.
It's a pleasure to be here, thank you.
No, and it's, uh, it's, uh, it's a lot of stuff going on. We had some cool weather now, keeps us from the hot.
It's time, it was past time, yes.
It's time, we're getting some rain, we're cooling down a bit. It's, it's, it's a good time. You know, kids will be off to school what, next week, I believe?
Yeah, it's coming up, the holidays come up so fast.
This year's gone so fast. I was still, we were still remembering April and now we're in December. But anyway, uh, how, how are you?
Good, good, keeping busy.
Keeping busy, the city is keeping you busy?
Yes, yes.
I wanted to talk a little bit about, I was asked this, why did you run?
Um, so I, we talked a little bit about me, but I don't think I got to tell you my, the most important part. I am a mother of five children.
Sure.
And, um, I ran because I wanted this city to be attracted to them to come back from their education and feel like they could raise their families with all the opportunities open that they would want for their families. My husband and I certainly feel that that happened for ours. And I want to make sure that that's available for all of Laredo.
You know, that's, that's a huge question, because there's, um, how come people come back? I came back, you from Laredo, we left and came back.
My husband did as well.
And many, many, many Laredoans leave for a while and then end up back in Laredo to raise their families. That was the main reason why I moved back. And, um, that community support, you know, we lived in, in Dallas. And the only people that you actually knew were either your clients or your, the customers that you had.
Yeah.
Those were, you know, you sometimes you never even knew your neighbors.
You really miss the sense of community.
Absolutely. And here, no matter where you go, no matter what part of town you're in, somebody's, you're gonna say hi to somebody. And that's beautiful thing about Laredo. And we have an excellent community. I think our people are, are, I say us Laredoans are very resilient to a lot of things that have occurred. And I think that everybody's right now kind of wondering what direction it's going. And just like you running for, for city council, it's that, I guess it's that direction that you wanted to go. How do you see Laredo in the near future? Let's say five, 10 years.
We have a tremendous opportunity because we continue to grow with trade. And it just doesn't look like that's gonna slow down. So I was looking over some numbers, and we've been growing at 5% every year, it's pretty consistent. And that's, um, well, I guess we had a big jump. We lost a little bit after, during the pandemic, and then had a big jump. So it's as if, oh, we have to make up for that time. But we keep continuing to grow. It is our opportunity, it is also our biggest challenge. Because as the city grows, city services have to grow with it. We're under a 3.5% property tax cap, which I know for some people, they, they say it's a very good thing. For the city, it's a struggle to grow our services out and extend them as our city limits grow and keep the same level of service. Deal with the increase in, um, the building permits and, and all of the construction, um, with that cap. So it's, it's our challenge, aging infrastructure, another big challenge. I think we have this plan for taking care of our infrastructure that wasn't always followed. And, and that's a, a problem for a lot of cities, right? You, you, um, ask consultants come in, experts, to help you formulate strategic planning and, and a pathway in the future. But the city's responsible for them following that and investing the money to keep up with the aging infrastructure. So if we have a thousand, and if we can take the water, um, issue.
We can, we'll put that aside, we'll talk about that one. I like that, I like the trick.
Then, then just that, when we have these plans, we then have to make the investment.
Sure.
To keep up.
Absolutely.
And we weren't doing that, it seems. So we need to get back on track and keep up.
You know, we've always had import-export. It's always been a, a, a trade and a business that's always made Laredo. Because of the corridor that we have with IH35 and some of the railroads.
Location, 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 right?
But what I'm seeing now, it's, it's that, it's, uh, our good friends in China are helping our neighbors build a massive railroad system that's gonna connect the Pacific to the Gulf, which are, their plan is to bypass the Panama Canal. When that comes to fruition, I believe we're gonna lose a lot of import-export here. And we're gonna start seeing our, our, our neighboring cities, like McAllen, Corpus, even Houston, all those ports are gonna start opening up. I see them building more corridors connecting because I think they've known this for a while than we have now. I think we, we're, I think, how can I put it? I think we're in, uh, not you all, but I think everybody's in the delusion that we're always gonna have that. Everybody's always trying to beat us with number one. So once, when you're number one, you have to stay number one. But second is very close behind, and third is closer than second, you know? So they're, they're moving faster than we are. So I think we better start analyzing what we're gonna be doing.
So, uh, I don't, the, the port cities along the, the border, so not the, the inland ports, I'll say.
Yeah.
Not the port city. So I can't speak for Corpus or Houston, but Laredo eclipses them by miles. There's not, there is not a, a second that's on our, nipping at our hills. We're, we're pretty far ahead. But to say that, you're absolutely right. We do need to continue to invest. If, if this is our largest economic driver, then we need to be investing in it. I feel like Laredo has done a good job in doing that. We've got the two international bridges. We're expanding the World Trade Bridge, so that presidential permit was secured. Those plans are being laid out, we're environmental studies right now. There is a future plan. We're looking at a presidential permit to expand the Columbia Solidarity Bridge. It has not reached its capacity yet, but because of the investment that Nuevo León, which is the other state, right? That, that, um, actually where Columbia exists, Columbia-Laredo Bridge exists, they're doing a lot to improve the infrastructure to get to that bridge. And they're doing it because Monterrey right now is having a bit of a renaissance as far as manufacturing and, um, all of the nearshoring, which, um, so the pandemic occurs, everything has gone after NAFTA. Everything went to Asia, right? Cheap labor, chasing cheap labor, all these companies, manufacturing companies relocated to Asia. And then the pandemic comes and they realize being so far away is no longer a benefit. And so now those companies are coming back, and they're coming back to Mexico, and Monterrey's receiving 70% of that nearshoring. If they're investing in their infrastructure so they can move product through our bridge, then we wanna make sure that bridge in the future can handle the capacity.
Absolutely, and we have, and we have to do that. You know, sometimes, I've been, you know, doing what you see, when you're inside here, right? And one time I was teaching over in Reno, and I've said this before, back in 2004, I was teaching for an international federation of martial arts from Indonesia. And, um, and I was with another instructor, and we were in the convention center. There was other conventions going on. And since we had a convention tag, we could go into some of the other places. So, and we were walking around, they were talking, they had a convention on robotics. So I entered, you know? Let's go in here and see what they have, you know? They had a lot of, um, robotic for manufacturing and car washes and all kinds of stuff that was just, it was, and as we were walking back in the back, there was a booth, McAllen. They were promoting the city of McAllen to all everybody there. And I was talking, I was talking to them, we were talking. In fact, one of them was, he had a cousin that was from Laredo. We were just talking, talking to, to them. And I said to myself, how come Laredo doesn't do that? I've never seen Laredo push Laredo in that sense, outside. And that's, I think we've lost.
Yes, we do, but, um, there are many trade shows. I, I think, I think we could do a better job, but Laredo's out there. It's, so we have the City Economic Development Department. That is, it's a new department, I mean, it's still developing. Um, the Laredo Economic Development Corporation is an organization that is funded by the city. It's also funded by the county, and they get private investment. That's another organization here in the city that's responsible for that, for going out for the promotion of Laredo as a port. Because nowadays, well, you can look at the automotive industry.
Sure.
Right? A lot of manufacturing occurs in Mexico. It, they send product to the United States, to plants here. The plants do one part of it, it goes back to Mexico to do another part. You've got like four or five trips before the auto manufacturers created a car in a US plant. So, um, that cross-border trade is incredibly important. And, um, Laredo is a great hub for it because of our location. And because we have now expertise in crossing this multiple times. Because if every, it's, and I will not speak for customs, I only understand a little bit, right? But, um, it's a technical process. You, it's because of security, it's because of product, it's because of, um, the, the, um, every time it crosses, there's some type of tax or whatever fee it is. And you need to have the relationship between the Mexican importer exporters and the American ones so that the transition is as smooth as possible. The number one thing I think I do have right is that time is money. So the faster that product can cross, and especially because it's going across so many times in the manufacturing process, it saves money. So they are looking for the fastest place to cross.
To save the money, of course. And that's, you know, that's, that's what needs to be done. Now, we talked about, uh, security on that end, because of customs and security. How do you see security in the border? How do you see it now with everything going on? With the fentanyl coming across, with all this immigration, everything.
Fentanyl is a real pernicious problem. So, um, fentanyl doesn't just cross through our border, right? It, it sent in packages directly to the United States. It also is a problem that was created because, you know, that one family, the Sackler family, decided they wanted to sell the opioids that their companies had made. And they did, um, a marketing job and got doctors involved and created an epidemic of abuse for this, for this medicine. It was supposed to be a medicine, right? For pain relief. And they created that culture of abuse. And to replace the opioid that finally the US cracked down on, you get people manufacturing the, you know, so you turn to heroin or you turn to synthetics, which is like fentanyl.
Yeah.
And that, that epidemic, if you have a demand, people are gonna find a way to supply it.
Absolutely. You know, I was, I was reading some stuff, especially on the people that were, um, the ones that were dealing the, the fentanyl. That they're gonna charge them now with life and sentences and stuff like that, which I think so, we have to, because it's, it kills.
It kills people.
It's killing people left and right. And some people might be taking something to stay awake in college kid that wants to pass that exam, and it takes a wrong, and that's it. It's slaves with, uh, with fentanyl, they're dead.
Yeah, all illegal drugs right now. You have to believe there's fentanyl in them. I mean, that's what we're being told by the DEA. That's what we're being told by our own police department. Every synthetic drug, every illegal drug, you have to believe there's fentanyl in it.
And, uh, you know, we have a, with that, it goes into a pandemic into our, our, our schools?
Yes.
I mean, it's, 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 uh, it's massive.
Pernicious and terrible.
It's, 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 it's a problem that we created that we can stop.
That's gonna, yeah.
That we can stop.
I will say, we have this great effort by our police department and our fire department. They have a team of people that go and they target, so they, you know, 911, you get calls all the time. And because it's, it's so prevalent when kids are at a party, and I, I don't mean to pick on kids, but kids are at a party and they take something and, and their friend, you know, falls down. The, the ones that are lucky are the ones who are calling, their friends are calling 911.
Yeah.
So that team then will also follow that person. So you save them. Narcan is a great product.
Sure.
You can use Narcan to reduce the effects of fentanyl poisoning. And if you don't, you shouldn't be afraid of it. Because if you were to give it to someone who hadn't taken fentanyl, nothing bad will happen. So we've got those available at all the fire stations and the city health department in a, in a place where you can go get it. Nobody's gonna ask you questions.
I think we should have, well, I think we should have it everywhere.
We're trying.
I think we should have it in every restaurant. Because here, well, we have a lot, a lot of, a lot of things that happen here. We don't have bars as per se. We don't have a nightclub scene like Austin and Dallas and San Antonio, that you have a district where people go. So here, what happens is, there's a restaurant that has a nice bar. Guess what? It becomes a social hangout. And there's nothing wrong with that. But I think every restaurant that has a bar should have one. Every nightclub should have these handy. They better understand that their, their teams are there. Because this can happen. They're the ones that are there already, in that type of, I think it's a good.
There's nothing that prevents these restaurants from, from getting their own supply. And the city of Laredo is very happy to help them set that up. We have it in our rec centers and in our fire departments, trying to get it out to the public.
Yeah, we, we have to, because this is something that, in the rec center too, you know, kids are outside doing whatever. And I, I hate to pick on kids, but they're the ones that are being.
Well, it, it.
It happens to everybody, but, 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 uh, but what I'm saying is, it has to be there. The kids in the rec center, you never know. They should, they should have that. The restaurants, the bars, they all should have it. They should, I don't know if we can mend it, may mandate it, or like an ordinance that they have to have that just for protection wise? Maybe so.
That might be a tougher one. I can, I can find out.
You know what I'm saying, man? You know, because there's a lot of things that, that we think we can't do it. But if it's for the safety, it might be, it might be logical for us to put something like that for every restaurant to put it in there.
Well, we, we do have an education campaign.
Sure.
And, and like I said, nothing prevents restaurant owners, bar owners from doing that. And the city of Laredo can be that resource to, for them to figure out how to set it up, for them to access the Narcan.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, um, and the reason, you know, I say that, you know, a lot of people, like, we were talking. I'm an executive chef. I haven't, I haven't practiced, but, um, we do a lot of things with designing restaurants and stuff like that. And that's a different, different, different format. And I think we have to protect them. We have to protect them, because that's what happens, unfortunately.
So this year, our numbers have decreased dramatically. And that is because of the efforts of the city and our police department and fire department. I, I can't, I can't thank them enough for, one, the chiefs who put it together, but also the, the men and women who are working on those teams to try to identify where there's an issue, talk to people who are most at risk, and, and get those numbers down.
You know, we're talking about police. I've seen a change in the police. I've seen a change in, in, in the attitude of some of the police officers. It's, it's a positive attitude. It was different a couple of years ago than it is today. It's, I've seen that change. And the chief is doing a good job there.
I believe so.
I think there's, there's still a lot more that we can do.
Of course.
It's always better for improvement. And when you, sometimes when you say something, they take it as an insult. No, nobody's attacking you. That if, if you can see something from somebody else and they're telling, hey, you know what? In your business, if you advertise this, well, you get a lot more people.
Yes.
Take it.
Yes.
Maybe they're seeing something you're not. And I think that's what, uh, we need to do. I think the, the chief has changed the department a bit. There's still problems, but, you know?
Yeah, I, I, I think so. And, um, this, our police department also works really well with all the other agencies that are here in town. I mean, we have a ABC alphabet soup of agencies, DEA, ICE, um, uh, just a lot, FBI, a lot of different agencies. And it is Border Patrol, and it is sometimes a real joint effort to keep our city safe.
Of course.
And there's been a lot of, um, uh, noise about the fact that we dropped out of the top 10. Laredo is recognized as the safest city in the state of Texas. So, you know, numbers change, but you're talking about the entire country. Laredo is still a, a very safe city.
Sure.
Based on, based on our statistics.
I've, I've seen it, but I've, uh, yeah, I think, this is what I, I have. If I can, we can touch base a little bit. Here, and, and I get a lot of kids getting bullied here. That's number one. Get a lot of women that are getting, they, they wanna learn self-defense. When you ask them why, then you end up finding out that either they're in abusive relationship or they have a stalker or what have you. And you send, sometimes they don't need to learn martial arts. It's better for you to send them, and, and we send them a lot to Pilate. Okay, they'll do a wonderful job. Because you might need help that way.
Right.
You wanna go to the police, we have police. And what I've seen in the last couple of years, I'll say last 10 years, yeah, in the police, is they kind of laxed on the stalking issues. A woman's being stalked, a woman's doing this, and they kind of, eh, nothing's happening. Then something does happen, and they go, oh, you never came here before. But she's been there four, five times already. They've called several times. So I think that's something that we have to go up against. And I think that's something that, that, you know, I'd like to, you know.
Well, personally, I, I, um, I don't, I don't know of any cases. I do have a, a relationship with Casa de Misericordia, which is their domestic violence shelter. And I know that I, you would like there to be no reason to have that, and that's not the case.
No, it's.
You know, they do tremendous work.
Yes.
Um, they've been open for decades now, and it's still a needed service, unfortunately.
On both sides.
Yeah.
The abuse of women in, in relationships, as well as women abusing men in relationships.
It happens, it's less, but it does happen.
It happened, and we need help on that. And, uh, you know, I see that. I see it in, you know, going through people that go through divorces. I was very proud that you all passed, uh, an ordinance last year, which was part of the 2503 interference for child custody, which was giving, um, the, the parent that's not allowing the other parent to see the child, a $500. And that's a story that's close to me. You know, like, I'll explain it to you. Because that, that changed a lot, took four years to do, but it came out of Laredo, back in 2020. Back in, right, the weekend before the pandemic occurred and everything occurred.
Oh, wow.
It was spring break. And, uh, you know, I was supposed to get my children, and that didn't happen. So I filed a report, and filed interference with child custody. Unfortunately, interference with child custody, it's a state jail felony. If you do not, but it's never been enforced, never. Throughout the state of Texas, it never has. It has now, but it has, in fact, then, they never do it at the time of interaction. Usually DA's at one time wanted seven cases. Imagine, seven? Can be four, three, four years, what can happen? And then they wanted four consecutive. Still can be, what happens if you get them every weekend, and all of a sudden, summer, they're gone, or, no. If they're, if, if you're, if it's your time for Christmas, you don't get them, stuff like that. So there's a lot of stuff like that that occurs. And then there's the more aggressive cases that you don't see them, period. And, uh, so it's always there. So we ended up changing it quite, because, you know, I called and put it there, and the officer that showed up, you know, pulls his gun. And I'm like, I'm making a report, so I called the police. He leaves, comes back. This occurred like at 8 o'clock at night, 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 uh, about 8:30 at night. Quarter to 12, I get a knock on the door, it was their supervisor. Go outside, and I say, I'm gonna record it. The officer that comes back and starts cussing everybody out. I'm like, I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to your supervisor. And that's how it started.
Oh, my goodness.
And so we all sat down, and we sat down with some activists from, that were fighting for, for that. Because it happens to, to women as well. Non-concubine parents, whether men or women, it happens. It's not just, it happens to men. So I got very involved in that. And, um, we ended up passing it. We found out that, um, Dr. Marte and, and councilman, when he was a councilman, he said, can we pass an ordinance? So we couldn't pass an ordinance, but we made a resolution, went to the state. So the state made it to the point that any municipality can vote it in, and they just get a ticket for 500. After the, the second one, the third one, they go to jail. Passed last year. Not one has been, not one ticket has been issued here in Laredo, which I think we have to, because they need both parents. And I think we have to start doing that, because whether it's the father taking the child away from the mother or the mother taking the, the child away from the father, alien, whichever way the alienation is occurring, it has to stop, because both, both parents, you might be divorced or not live together, but you both have to raise that child. They're, both are as important. So I think that, that needs to change. Because that's something that you see it in schools. You see it in school, you see the child that's being alienated goes in. There's a lot of stats that, that can show the kids going into drug abuse, early pregnancies, jail. It, it happens because of that.
Divorce, yeah, it has an impact, it really does. And, and what you hope is that both parents can, can, um, have a relationship that allows them to focus on what's best for the child.
Absolutely. And that's what you, and that's what you have to do. And after a while, you start, and then later on. My kids are aged out now, but, yeah, that's how it started.
Yeah.
But, other than that, you know? Now let's get back to the issue, when you said the water, because that one was a good one.
Well, I, I do wanna say, so, um, I'm a mother of five, I have three girls. And before those girls went off to school, they, they were fortunate, they went to, um, higher education outside of the city. Um, we asked, it wasn't, it wasn't this type of martial art, but we did have someone come and, and help train them just in self-defense.
You have to.
Well, I, it, it helps them have a measure of security and confidence. And I think that's great for any kid who's going, you know, you're leaving your home, you're going to a different city, a different community, uh, trying to find your way. Uh trying to find your way, having that measure of of security, I think helps them personally to grow.
Absolutely. And that, you know, and uh we get a lot of um young ladies that are in college that are out, they're coming to train here. We get a lot of that.
Yeah.
Get a lot of, I keep telling parents, you know, now all of a sudden they're seniors and they're going off to college. Can you teach them right now? Where where they're when they're kids, that's. It's not microwavable, you know.
You don't think about it until you're like, oh my god, they're gonna be out of my control, how can I help them?
You know, yeah, for 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 ages, we used to teach uh free seminars for women. Every 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 second Sunday of the month, I would I would always teach. I I stopped from the pandemic forward, I I stopped, but we did it for years. And during that timeframe, which was very an ugly couple of months that we had in Laredo when those women got. Uh raped, remember the twenty seven over here, that that whatever they call it, night, north side rape, whatever they call it. So even, I mean, we did a lot for the community. In fact, we brought down the guardian angels. Remember Curtis Salua came down and he talked to him about how to do that. And that was the first time ever, I mean, we're sitting down and he tells me, we have a problem now. He goes, it's something called cyberbullying. Nobody knew what it was. This was like twenty twenty oh eight, twenty oh eight, twenty oh seven, when when all this was going on. But what gets me, they never caught that rapist.
I moved to a different community.
Or they were jailed by something else, but it's 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 those are, how can I say? And what I was trying to get at is. Don't learn self-defense because of those issues happening. Learn self-defense, whether this school or any other school, for your own self. Okay, sometimes these martial arts um can change your habits, can change the way you move. Can change your direction, can give you better self-esteem, more confidence. That's basically what it is. Now, if you wanna go compete, there's a competing edge of it. If you wanna go at holistic sources of holistic edge of it. And I think we're the only. Country, I would say, that doesn't mandate that our kids, doesn't have it in public education. I know in in England they used to, I don't know about now. I know in France they used to, because in every every French school, you have a swat. And you know, in Brazil, they have capoeira. So I know in in some of the other countries like China and everybody else, you're learning it. You're gonna learn, you're gonna learn something of it. Whether you're doing karate in the afternoon, but in school, you're gonna learn capoeira in Brazil. You know, whatever, but it's 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 something that that they pass you through. And it kind of builds that confidence sense, confidence of self-esteem. That's what it's basically for. And and when you have to get out of that situation that you're in, whether you're being bullied or being abused in an abusive relationship. And transfer it somewhere else and start gaining confidence in your self-esteem somewhere else and build it. And that's how you improve yourself. That's what I'm saying, you know?
Yeah.
Now with the water issue. What's going on?
So we have about a thousand miles of water pipe. And there are two systems, right? Because we just had a collapse of a fifty two inch sewer pipe. So wastewater is one system, right? And and that's that pipe that collapsed just recently. Um but the other is our potable water, drinking water, and that runs through about a thousand miles of pipe. They've identified three hundred miles of pipe that's fifty years old or older. And every city in the state of Texas uh is coming up against this issue, right? Um some with more serious problems than others. Uh and you, how do you replace three hundred miles of pipe? You don't do it overnight. Uh there was an effort at city council to try to, after the water boil notice, to try to. Stop every other project going on in the city anywhere and throw money at the problem. You you the utilities department has um I I think we, it over a hundred million dollars right now in projects. That are ongoing or will be. And all of those require engineering design plans, require. Environmental studies or whatever it is, you 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 don't throw money at a problem and the next day dig up some pipe. And think you can replace it and it's all good. It's a complicated system because it's all interconnected. I think about. What it takes to get your faucet in your bathroom so you can turn it on to brush your teeth. How it takes to get water to that point. It's a complicated system of connected pipes. Some of it is is run by gravity, other is run by um what they call lift stations, which. Basically are electrical pumping stations to push water through. Uh it's all gotta be running at the same time so that you can get your water in faucet.
You know, that that's that's, I think that problem is something that that's always been.
Mm-hmm, yes.
You know, when people say fifty years, how come they didn't do it ten ye- ten years ago, forty years ago, understanding that they were all then?
That's, yeah, so the best time to have been working on this problem was twenty, thirty years ago. Second best time is now.
What you see, what I see here in Laredo, it's that good old habit of let's kick the can down the street and let's see who else is gonna get it. And all of a sudden it blows up and everybody's like, it's your problem, you're the ones that are doing it. It's not really that, it's. And that falls back to people in departments that have been. Bad actors for a long time. You know, when I heard, when I heard that issue with. There were so many illegal connections, over two hundred illegal connections. Well, who's the ones that give the connections a go, if it's not the inspectors?
Right, so.
You know, I'm not gonna go out here and connect to that, there's no way.
Well, what what happens is, so homeowners, sometimes you hire, you hire people who say I can do the job. And then you make huge assumptions that they're following all the code. If before I was in council. I didn't understand, there's this book of regulations that every contractor is supposed to follow. So if I'm hiring someone to put a new pipe or build a new remodel a bathroom. I just assume they know what they're doing. And so if that contractor is not a licensed contractor, because. I I will admit in the past, I haven't asked, I didn't know. Um or just it maybe they are a licensed contractor and just not following the rules. They make connections, the water softener, you know, that's a, it's a a newer thing to to have a water softener installed at your house. It softens the water, so it the water has to run through it. They have to make those connections. If they're not doing it correctly.
You know, and that's where, that's where. I think. Because if I'm gonna remodel my house, I have to go get a building permit. And if I hire a plumber that's gonna go do a major thing, he has to go get a building permit.
But you trust him to do that?
And if he goes, gets a building permit, and he says, I did it, and it doesn't have it, then he's the one that's at fault. But now, I think that there's also nefarious actions going on there, because it don't, I mean, I I know there's bad actor, you know what I'm saying?
It could be both.
You know, you know what I'm saying? I'm like, you know, so I think we have to, we have to get rid of certain people. And I think that's where we fail. Laredo as, I'm talking about the municipality, not you all, because I'll I'll talk a little bit about the way I I I think the city is run. And. We need to have, if you, we have to be able to fire. We have to have that ability to say, you know what? And also now if here's ten complaints on you, you have to go. We can't make you an assistant director. You know what I'm saying?
You shouldn't be.
You know, you know, you can't, you can't be. You know, failing in this project can become city manager, assistant city manager. No, you can't. You know what I'm saying? And it's unfortunately, we, here in Laredo, we've, we're into that amigos, compadres, whatever, kind of ideology.
That's changing, but.
I hope so. But you know, and then you uh then you you get into that, because you yeah, you brought you brought up a good point, but. Is there nefarious action going? What are the, what are the remedies? How are they gonna get fired? What is gonna happen? You can't just, oh, yeah, I messed up, I'm gonna, I'm gonna resign and all of a sudden, nothing happens to me. Understand what I'm saying?
The department directors and there is a process. People do not get fired overnight. In any job, right? You go through a process, you can be remediated, but somebody has to be holding you to account. We have to hold people to account.
That accountability needs to occur.
Yes.
That accountability needs to occur. And it ha- and it has, but hopefully we got people inside that can start changing. Now, going back to what I think is how the city goes. I think you all are are here, okay?
We're supposed to be policymakers.
Sure, sure, you're on the top.
Yes.
Then you have a city manager, we have a bunch of directors, we have the employee. There's some type of lack of communication that's going from you all. To the bottom.
So it actually, you should see it side by side. So city council is here and city manager is here. Because we make policy, but the city manager is the one who's responsible for implementing it across all those departments.
And if they're not.
And the city council is not supposed to go and jump into the city manager. We tell the city manager, we sit here and tell him. But we are not supposed to get in the weeds and be telling directors what they're supposed to be.
No, I understand. Uh and that that I that I understand. But the telling the directors is one, one thing. The idea of where you all want the city to grow and to move and to push, it's not coming down, not trickling downward. Or it's not being passed down through osmosis. There's there's something, there's barriers that are being blocked. We want growth with small businesses. There's small businesses going up. All of a sudden, it takes fifteen to twenty five days to get a temporary electrical permit. That business is gonna be closed down if they don't have that much.
Right. Because a small business doesn't have the deep pockets to be able to wade through the system of of. Yeah, bureaucracy, which is a responsibility of our city departments. And it has, it has come up to to, it's 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 out in the the open now be- because of the complaints. Right? We've heard a lot of complaints. I think part of the problem, I'm not saying it's, I I don't mean to excuse it at all.
No, no, no.
But part of the problem is you, if you go into the building permits, we have seen growth in those building permits. And the last few years, it's exploded. So here we are trying to keep up with this. Increase of demand that's crazy. And you see that in our trade, right? We have um four hundred million square feet of warehouse space, which is like tremendous. And we are seeing a hundred or forecasting a hundred million square feet being built in the next two years. Now, does that mean we're gonna get a glut? We might, but it that is what's going on. So all of that is happening. And those are bigger actors. A city is still responsible for all, taking care of that, inspections, all of what they need to grow. And at the same time, we have to help small business. And it's a crunch. I I, part of it, I think. Is that we are growing so fast that we need to be better about directing our resources. And we need, as a city, need to make sure that we are also focused on small business. They may not have the pockets that this these bigger companies coming in have, but they are vital for our economy.
Absolutely.
They hire more people, uh you know, as a group, right?
You know, um because of the business that we're doing here. I'm always doing studies where we're going, where we're, where we're at. And I did a study pre-pandemic. During pandemic. And just in how many places in Laredo at that time, February of twenty twenty. At we're teaching martial arts, whether it was in a gym, rec center, whatever, at eighty three. Places here in Laredo. Whatever, there's kickbox aerobics, boxing, whatever.
So a contact sport.
Right. No, not really contact sport, a.
Well, I mean, person to person.
Right. And and so all of a sudden, during the during the pandemic. When the pandemic ended, started pushing forward, in twenty one, January, we have twelve.
Yeah.
Now we have thirty four. Now it's moving forward, it's not that, it's it's that a lot of the gyms. Are now reteaching those things, like Gold's Gym with the kickbox aerobics classes and some of the rec centers are now pushing it. It's regrowing again. So we lost. You know, the mall, businesses were out and half, one third of the mall was closed. I don't know how much it is now. And what it uh what gets me is that we need to push more. It can't be a clique-ish environment of certain businesses, of certain people. It has to be a wide open everywhere else. I know that there's growth coming out that we want this downtown to grow. But if the streets, the buildings in the street, the streets, you only parking. And then you tell the business, well, you need eleven parking spaces. What's gonna happen? So we need, we need to realize where it's gonna be at and where we're going. Um. So it it has to, it has to grow. Is it, can we get a. Commercial kind of setting in a in a neighborhood that has a secondary street? I'm just gonna throw a street out. Secondary will be like say Springfield. And we get, can we do a business on a corner lot or do something to that effect? We need those parameters to, for those small businesses, and not less, but faster in process.
Yeah, so we just had, uh in my district, there was just a a a change from an what we call residential status to our status. To a B one, a business status, and it's a, B one is a lower impact business and you have B one, B three, B four, which is the highest. Um before it turns to an industrial usage. And I think one of the most important things that city council does. Is uh make those decisions about land use. And that really does shape where our city goes. What we have so often is in the past councils that haven't maybe paid as much attention. And then also you have businesses that are today considered industrial or very high use. In the middle of neighborhoods, because they've been there for seventy years and and those things, they have a legacy. They have a a right to be there because they were there before zoning laws came into play. Um. It it's always a balance. We're we're trying to, the it the B one passed, it office Springfield in in my district. Because the landlord, a woman, wanted to make office building, office space. And it's gonna exist next to houses, but it is a lower impact office space. Um not a lot of cars will be there and the use will be during the day when, you know, most people are at work. We try to find those solutions, those compromises. At the same time, I wouldn't advocate to allow for a B four next to homes. Because you could put an auto body paint shop there. And I don't want residences to have to deal with the fumes from an auto body paint shop. They may not come in saying I want an auto body paint shop, but once that land gets the designation of that zone.
It can become.
In the future, it can become. And as city council, we really have to take that seriously. So that we protect our neighborhoods. Because in the end, we want this to be a place where people want to come and live. Work and play and and be comfortable where they're at. And I think that it's a really important job of city council. So we had a um a council member who changed the ability of a city council. Um made it easier for city council to overturn a decision. Because first, all the zoning laws, they go through the planning and zoning department and the planning and zoning commission. Which are made up of individuals that every council member assigns. They have time, that's all they do. They look at these cases. They're not allowed to be on any other committee, because we want these citizens to dedicate their time and study the issues.
How often do they meet?
Um I think it's twice a month. Perhaps once a month. Sometimes it's based on demand, right? How many um changes are you getting? Are you, or is the department being asked to look at? So that commission does their work. If there's a double recommendation. So if they're both positive, it comes to council and those council says, yes, of course, and we pass them. If they're both negative. Council can look at those. And it should be a super majority of council that has to overturn. Well, one of our council members, we just left, and did that rule. And so now it's a simple majority. So it makes it very political at the council level. I'm hoping that in the future, we can get that change. And respect the work that is being done out of our department and out of our committee.
You know, that, what you just said there opens a lot of, or dissolve the committee.
Why would we dissolve this committee?
And I'm gonna tell you one. Right now, there's a lot of people that want to hire race, be paid, because being city council.
Oh no, they already got it.
Yeah, okay. They say that it values what they've, the time that they're putting in, right?
Um, the uh uh so this is a, this is an issue that you know, right? We, I was one of the three that came out against it.
And I'm gonna tell you now. So now they wanna do this? Dissolve the committee? Now you're gonna, you're gonna research those those places?
Okay, well, that, I don't think that will happen.
Now, you've, now if you're gonna be full time.
Yes.
You have to go to all the committees.
Yes.
There's committees in this, in the city that the same people have been in the same committees throughout years and nothing gets done.
Well, part of that is that, well, part of that is because city council doesn't respect the decisions coming out of these committees. The point for having committees is that you have citizens who are more involved in what the city does and can give us perspective. From a lot of different neighborhoods.
And or dissolve them. Okay, this committee is gonna be here for six months. At the end of six months, okay, this is what you brought. At the sound of this gathering, the committee is done.
Right.
Pick another one. When uh no, no problem is, now they wanna get paid for this, be now dissolve the committee, start doing the work.
I don't know if the work will get done. And I will tell you, well, I mean, because there's so much that.
You know what? Now you wanna be here? Now you have to be in all the planning and zoning committees? You're gonna be there. On the water committee, now you guys are gonna sit down and do this.
Oh, so you're not saying dissolve the committee and it doesn't meet. You're saying we become, we go sit there and we are the committee meeting. Well, I would be very happy to be there.
Now you can see and you can study everything is.
Yeah.
Before it goes over there to council.
Well, I I do try to study my zoning cases. I really do. But we do need to respect the committee. They are made up of individuals who spend a great deal of time and. They have a great perspective and some of them are planners. I know my appointee happens to be a planner. And it we when we ignore what they're saying. What that does is it we get the phone calls. It becomes very political. And the last thing you want is land use to be political. It should follow the strategic plan for how you want the city to grow.
You know, I've been watching, I've been where we're from here. So you start seeing especially in the secondary water issue. Most of the people in the secondary water issue have been in that committee for several years now. Many of them are sitting down ten years plus.
And and we have been trying to shake something loose.
And then and then and then all of a sudden, you have that new development that's coming up. And all of a sudden, now they have water. They took them like this and they got it, why? Because they're all energetic to go forward and we're gonna move forward. While here, we're still twiddling our thumbs trying to. Trying to yell at each other, you know what I'm saying? You have the same people here for fifteen years that can't do anything and right here, they did it in months.
I I will say to the to the to the credit of the Walker family.
They did great.
They invested millions of dollars to get the hydrology right and then to do the wells. Now, before that area can be a secondary water source for us and and I do support it. Being one of the secondary water sources that we need to acquire. They're looking at in the future to have forty two wells. They are at four. So it is a long term project. It is important that we are part of the process because we do want them to become one of our secondary water sources.
Now, let me tell.
It's not the only source we need.
On on the sources, we'll we'll touch base right now because there's something there in the treaty and um. That I think we're missing out on instead of somebody from the valley coming up and getting it. That's a dam. But on that talis. We already made the infrastructure for that city to boom.
For it it lies outside of our, you're talking about the highway system. Lies outside of our extraterritorial jurisdiction.
No, 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 they're they're on their own. No, they're they're fine. It's like what happened with Dallas, McLean.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and it's gonna boom. People are gonna move over there. They're gonna work over here, they'll commute. The infrastructure for the bridges are already done. All they have to do is put warehouses over there. And you're gonna start seeing that take off. And Laredo is gonna be. In ca- in cap- cap- capsulated and it's gonna stay there and those are gonna go. Then you're gonna probably see another. Little community bust up in the next, I would say, next thirty years. If it goes that way. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, or maybe the growth would move to in cement. I mean, we have.
So yeah, so it's gonna go that way. We needed that.
Yeah, growth is good for everyone.
You know, we need that.
It can be good for everyone.
And they have, well, they put a couple of schools, you're gonna have people, oh, I mean, they have everything. I mean, it's it's a, it's great what they did and you know, and I'm glad they did that. And they've they've always been very energetic towards that.
Well, the development of the water is is an incredible opportunity.
Absolutely. And the other one that I've been seeing is, we have a, there's a treaty that when that we're supposed to have three dams.
Three dams?
Well, we have two.
Right, Amistad and Falcon.
We should be pushing to build a dam in Webb County in the north. And making that more of a record recreational because we can't really put it.
The so you're talking about the Weir Dam.
And because that dam, anybody can, that's on the river, can ask for it. The valley can ask for one as well. People say, oh, well, it's really done. There's not that much water trickling, but once you dam something up, it's gonna. And people are gonna say, no, the evaporation rate does this and the evaporation does that. We need to start seeing what it is. And we also have, Mexico owes us a lot of money with water.
A water debt, so.
We need to start telling them, you know what? You have to pay.
Right, right. So I will say, so um we've been talking to Senator Cruz and Senator Cruz and Senator Lujan from New Mexico. Have already approached Mexican government and using more, I would say, sticks instead of carrots. To uh talk about the water debt. It's a a a delegate negotiation because. Mexico has uh this treaty, the treaty with Igo from eighteen forty eight, I hope I'm right with that. Um says that Mexico owes the United States a certain amount of water. We do the same with them with the Colorado River system. We give them water from that system, right? And um so they this treaty here, they get five years to fulfill that water debt. What they owe us, right? And in the past or more recently, they wait until the end before they fulfill their debt. However, what is happening with the Rio Grande and that's our only source of water right now. Is that there is drought and that is impacting the amount of water in the Rio Grande. So the Pecos River and the Devil's River are the primary water sources to the Amistad Reservoir. And the Amistad Reservoir that is located in um North Texas uh by the Rio. It um it holds two years of water for the city of Laredo. Like we have it banked there. And so our water is really from the releases of that reservoir. And the Devil's River and Pecos River that are supposed to primarily be supplying the Amistad Reservoir. Their water capacity is down. So it has nothing to do, it's not nothing, but it it's not just Mexico. If Mexico were to fulfill their water debt tomorrow. That would just be a third of the amount of water that that reservoir needs. It's because on the United States side, the Devil's River and the Pecos River are just not producing as much water. This is a climate issue. And that is why secondary water is such an important issue for the city of Laredo.
And we have to. We have to. I remember there was a gentleman from Carrizo that was pushing some secondary source. And it it seemed like a great idea. But we have to start tapping into, you know, we have um with with um with the walkers. But we also have county land. And county land. That that is supposed to, whatever you use in county land is supposed to lower the taxes for this in the school districts that we have here. Okay?
Well, I I think the the walkers, the part of that legacy water supply corporation plan. Is to drill wells on the the school land and some of the money then, some of those. Um the fees for getting the water out will go to the school districts. That's a plan for the future.
But you know, they should. I think we should be, I think Webb County should have been doing that a long time ago. If that's thing, uh you know, because they always say, no, we can't, we can't, we can't. And that's something to lower the taxes. Those lands are to lower the taxes. That's a different issue. You know, because it's a it's a county issue. But um and and that and that affects the rest, of course, but we're in the county, correct?
Right, yes, it does. Yeah, so secondary water is is a huge um issue and it's not just for the city of Laredo. Right? This is going on all over the west. Because that's where you see the climate changing and and drying out the most. And it you you know, you're seeing the east right now get inundated, flooded, the snowpack, all of the issues, but. The west is still pretty dry and um waiting for that to change. We need to be doing what we can to ensure that we can secure water for our future. It's part of, it's gonna impact our growth. You know, the I think it was the city of Phoenix decided to stop development outside their city limits or outside of what they already have. Because they didn't have the water.
You know, it's 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 it it water, number one. And it's not just water there, it's the pollutants there, it's that water too. And we need to do that because we can do everything here to protect the pollutants, but if our neighbors aren't doing it, what good is it? You know, people say, oh, the gas in the air, well, if they move the company over there to Morelado, we're still gonna be breathing the same air and yeah. There's no, there's no fence.
So that is why the bi-national uh relations are so important. Because you know, we we hear a lot, oh, it it's you 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 don't wanna just be for Mexico and. Um we wanna make sure it's Laredo first and and Mexico second. Well, actually, we're the same community, right? We came out of that. When the the border was created. People were told, well, you know, you're gonna be a United States citizen now. If you wanna be a Mexican citizen, you need to cross the river. And they created the community of Nuevo Laredo that way. So it's our our roots are there. Uh that was a long time ago. Obviously, these cities have grown apart and separate. But what happens here? We are impacted by what happens in Nuevo Laredo and vice versa. So what you're saying is exactly right. The eighty one million dollar loan that the Nuevo Laredo City took out to improve their wastewater treatment plant. And deal with the issues of dumping raw sewage into the river, that's incredibly important.
They but they have to fulfill it, you know. Unfort- unfortunately, it's kinda like.
They took the step forward.
Yeah, of course, eighty one million dollars, anybody's gonna jump and make a back slip, you know?
They took it on. They took on the loan. It is a loan. This is not a grant. This is the city of Nuevo Laredo saying, we are going to do this, we're gonna invest in our community so that we can solve this problem. Because of the impact to their own residents and then it benefits us as well.
You know, we. It's funny because yeah, anyway. Um we we live in a in a timeframe that people don't trust their government. Okay, and they don't. So when you talk about cultures that are known for nefarious actions. Of course, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, okay. You know, it's like one time they wanted to put, they wanted to make a rain rain machine. They were gonna paint some Russian. For a rain machine, they were and they were gonna pay the Russian. And and they were gonna see see the the clouds.
Something, something strange, yeah.
I mean, um you know what I'm saying? Nothing against Russians, but you're gonna pay somebody in another country to come see, okay?
Yes, I don't think I trust Russians right now either.
You know, but.
What? So this is NAB Bank money, National uh North American Development Bank. It has strings. They have oversight. They're very careful with their dollars because it's a federal program, right? Targeting border, which is good for us, but it's a federal program. So there will be much more oversight. Than in previous grants or you know, the the history of of uh the involvement of of American dollars in. Nuevo Laredo. Th- this is a little different.
You know, um. Well, you know, Mexico will be Mexico. You know, we have to take, I think, you know, we have to take care of ourselves first. We have to make ourselves strong. Very strong. Not only Laredo, Texas, America, we have to become as strong as we can be. Because we have laxed ourselves a lot by kicking the can down the street. People have taken advantage of that. And I say that here, you know? Our neighbors, McCallen in the valley and those have taken advantage because we kept on kicking the can down the street. And now they're they're growing and they're taking advantage of those those things, businesses and everything else, you know, this. It's a lot more small business friendly to go over to McCallen or San Antonio.
So we are geographically isolated, right? I mean, it's Laredo and not a whole lot else around us. The valley, you know, we you look, you think McCallen, little town, Edinburgh, little town. Put them all together, one point eight million people. That is crazy. When did that happen? I feel like we closed our eyes and all of a sudden, boom, the population.
We're kicking the can down the street.
Well, and but there's a tipping point. Once you get that kind of population, it is easier to attract things. Because they have people to serve. So, yes, they've done things to to, of course, make themselves very uh business friendly. I I do not discredit that, but they also have the advantage now that they have this population center. That they can draw from.
Well, we have a population center here. I don't think we're taking advantage of it. Think people need to put down the census and they shouldn't be afraid. We keep saying we have two hundred and sixty thousand. There's no way Laredo's two two hundred and sixty thousand. We're like three fifty.
We do a terrible job of responding to the US census.
And and because you see neighborhoods growing and you see this growing and you're like, there's no way we're at.
In the future, please answer the census questions, please. Because that's how you get allocation of dollars. And we would get qualified for a lot more federal and state dollars if we were a large, if we were counted correctly, which we are not likely.
You know, and everything that goes in there. There's so much. And I'm not saying, I'm not here to say, you know, there's so much wrong with Laredo. Not not I get that love Laredo in my in the community that we love in. But we see things in different in different things to see better. It's not. Yelling at somebody and calling them names and you're corrupt isn't it? It's not that. If there's a problem, you all are a voice. The city council is the voice of the community. And and exactly, and if somebody's harboring whether ill feelings and they're out there yelling. Insulted, if things a different story.
Personal, people can complain, they have every right to do so.
Once you listen, maybe there's something going on. We have to put our antennas up and start paying attention. And if there's something there, let's fix it to to make it better. Because there's a lot, uh I I care for the small businesses. I care for for our youth and of course for the safety of everybody. And I think we might have excellent first responders. But there's things that we're lacking in the police department, especially with with treating treating stalking and tra- treating those threats and. And treating, there's there is a bias and I'll say there's there's a bias. If a man makes an incident, uh calls for an incident report or calls for police to come, as for a woman. If a man calls the police to come, it takes up to four hours for a police officer to show up, between two to four hours. If you called, a woman shows up, they'll show up in fifteen minutes, five police officers waving guns. So I understand, but it but we have to take that, you know, that into per- into perspective. It's, am I badging the police? I'm not, but I think we have to be a little bit more fair throughout. And I'm not being. Uh machismo, not not to that effect. I'm just saying that there's issues there, the issues with the stalking. That has to be taken care of because. There was, um you know, people might say, no, it's not true. The incident with the young lady that got killed that they had, they had in an attic a couple of years ago, remember? And the guy fled to Mexico and blah 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 and all this other stuff. There were already complaints of that individual. The police did nothing about it. They should have followed through. Unfortunately, that's what happened. You know, the trust what happened last year with the voter fraud. What happened last year with with uh the money that was stolen from their own union. Remember the police officer that pulled that brandish his gun? That was the same one that took the money. I mean. So we have to, they themselves, we have to protect the good badges, number one, period. You all do an excellent job, but if there's some bad actors, we need to protect the good badges against the bad actors. And the bad act and the community against those bad actors. Because overall, it's.
And I I do believe um this chief is is doing that, then he's. Instituting changes to make the police department stronger and um better able to serve.
Yeah, I've seen and 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 I've and I've seen that with the attitude of 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 with the policeman. I've seen I've seen that with the way they where they the ways they're approaching you now. It's a lot more calmer, it's a lot more. You know what I'm saying? It's not the.
Right, well, because they, I think they realize that they need partners in this. We we all need to chip in. It's our community. We need to, all of us need to help make it safer.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. What else are you looking forward in 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 the near future and trying to change? What else you say? You know what? This is something that when I leave, I wanna make sure that I change this.
Um so what we are finding out with the water issue, uh building permits, inspectors. Um our our projects, we need engineers. The medical community has seen this for a long time, is that Laredo has difficulty in attracting professionals. To come work here. If you, professionals get to choose the cities in which they live. So they go to other schools to get trained and then they get to choose where they decide to raise their families. And I think as a city council, and this happens in all cities. We should be focusing on improving quality of life here. Because that is something we can control. Business, we need to be business friendly, but we also need to have places for people to. It's live, work and play. So the work is making sure we're business friendly, but the live and play, that's quality of life issues. So we need to do a better job at revitalization. So we need to do a better job at revitalization of whether it right now, there's a seven point six million dollar um, grant that is partially funded by the city and county and partially uh, half by the federal government to revitalize the Sacate Creek area. And create, that is one of the uh, natural treasure and create a space that is attractive to all of Laredo. The the pla- if we can find places for people to be drawn to, we create economic activity there, but we also create a place to talk, be talked about and to attract families to, and that is how you get professionals to come and move here. Um, we have great educational facilities, that's another piece of it, right? If you wanna attract professionals, you have to have a place for their kids to do well in school, to get educated well. Laredo College is recognized as one of the best community colleges in the state. Texas A and M International is one of the best higher education universities and and also cost effective universities for your dollar in the state. So we can build off of these these resources that we have. But council needs to focus on a strategic plan to have um, better quality of life.
Absolutely, no, I agree with you. And we always talked about tourism. And we're all saying, oh, the tourists come here, but they go uh, to Nova Laredo. Why don't we build it here? There's a back then. As well, there was always, it was always, oh, we're going back, and we're talking about twenty years. We had twenty years to enter, you know, the, it became Nova Laredo became unpopular in twenty, in twenty oh three, when the setups and everybody started lifting up. And everybody made a mass migration over here. So that's what happened. And unfortunately, that's what happened, and.
Well, even we need to look at it as an advantage.
Sure, sure, and we need to produce the the tourism here. What you're saying about the Sacate Creek, that's, I think that's a beautiful element. I think all our focus should be that. Now, you know, number number one. And.
So to be clear, that is the first stage of that bi-national riverfront project.
And I'm, uh, because I've talked to many people, and many people are pro, a lot of people are against. A lot of people do not understand, a lot of people don't know what's going on. People think that there's gonna be crossways and you can bike ride to Nuevo Laredo and come back, and I don't know if that's true or not. I don't know if it's gonna be, I don't think our our Border Patrol and our security is gonna help us with that.
That's that's not gonna happen. What 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 it what should happen is once you begin to invest in the riverfront, security is layered into it. Any place you're going to ask people to go, you have to make sure it's a secure place. So that's cameras, that's working hand in hand with Border Patrol. They have been in every conversation with the bi-national riverfront people, um, and this technical working group, I'm part of it. Border Patrol is represented there, because these are shared interests, right?
Yeah, those and those interests are are nice, especially with with the Border Patrol. And the reason I say that, they sent me a video on uh, Father Magdable's part, for about thirty five illegals across. Where kids and everything else. And I was like, where's Border Patrol? Where did all those people go? What house did they stash themselves into? What happened to the car? I mean, this is an ongoing thing, we we, I mean, security is one thing, our kids are number one. And I think that's another reason why we're losing a lot of families that wanna come here. I used to have a uh, a business with, it was a hunting business, an exotic hunting business, which was in Savala County. That's very far from the river, even though it's three counties away. Uh, either way you went, whether it was from from Eagle Pass, it was uh, seventy miles away, from here it was a hundred miles away, from from, you know what I'm saying, so it was it was it was far from the river. People will call and they'll see the phone number was a nine five six, and they go, they say, oh, you're in Laredo, it's it's violent. The cartel's there, and I go, no, we're, right, no, it's, they wouldn't wanna come here because they're associated with that.
So there's a huge narrative out there, uh, that we are um, less than safe. If you look at Google, Google Maps, what comes out first? It's Nuevo Laredo, cause they're bigger. So people don't even know sometimes, we're two separate cities. Um, and the United States side is completely different from Nuevo Laredo. Uh, we need to do a better job of getting out that narrative, cause apparently we don't. I think it's hard when you live here and you don't see any of it to understand that people have a much different impression of what goes on here. And then I think our emphasis on trade and and the money that moves through here legitimately through trade, um, on the other side. Um, those gangs, they don't, they understand the economic driver that we are. And they choose to move people out to different places.
I think you're right.
See the same type of migration issues that they see in other communities. Um, and 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 that's to our benefit, but I I people don't, outside of us, don't understand. They just see the border as one big thing. We don't control the economic um, pushes that people feel to come to the United States. Um, our business community inside the United States are, who picks our fruits and vegetables? It's migrant labor. And some of it's legal, a lot of it is not. And that, if 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 this deportation actually takes place, where are you gonna find the labor to to drive what what is produced, what we eat for dinner every night?
You think that's another one, you know, in Congress, Congress is another one that's been kicking that can down the street for many, many years.
Immigration, you need to have working permits.
You have to be. Yeah, exactly.
The jobs exist, and as long as those jobs exist, people are gonna try to kill them.
You know, my wife's from Brazil, just for me to open up a business in Brazil, just for me to go, the paperwork's about that big. Okay, so I'm not complaining about that. Okay, so when she came here, came illegally, I had to go through, you know, a process. And uh, and these people are just coming into the front of the line and getting hurt, no, let's 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 start pushing back. But immigration's one one the one thing, and immigration has been a problem that we've had for a very long time. And unfortunately, we are the greatest country in the world, we better be that way.
We have the strongest economy and our economy.
Well, not right now, we need to build it back up.
Objectively speaking. We are the strongest economy.
And we better keep the dollar, the dollar.
Out of the pandemic and the west of the world crashed. There was recession all over the place. We did not see that. With, one of the reasons why so many people were coming is because their countries collapsed. And what is, we understand what that primary co- what the primary reason for being, you need to feed your family. You need to make sure your kids have a future.
But there's there's a difference, we can, we can have work visas. We can have, we can have work visas, you do this so much, you can, you can put in there, that we need to have that. And we have to make that a lot, but there's, I mean, we have the, um, what is it, our de Telingua, uh, Telingua de Agua Aragua gang, that's all from Venezuela. They released, they released everybody and they put them over here, and they're all over the place. And we have them here. We have them in Austin, we have them in San Antonio, in Dallas, they took over accomplices in Colorado, in Chicago. So we have that here, that's a big gang. And that gang's not only taking care of here, it's stepping up in Mexico. And it's all the way down to Peru, Brazil, because Venezuela pushed, pushed out.
Gangs, I.
It's a lot different.
Came in, we had mafia, we. Criminal element is anywhere there are.
But there's, but there's.
Our society is just set up that when you have people who have nothing and no means, some of them look for ways to get something outside of the legal system. So then, that's why you have law enforcement, and they need to be doing their jobs.
But we, but we've allowed that to occur. Now, I wonder what's gonna happen when those gangs stand up here. And we better, we better have the 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 capacity.
Force.
We better have the capacity to stop it, that's a different thing.
It's a concern, we structurally, we have a, it's not a department, but it is like a department.
Like a task force.
A a task force that is directly working on that issue.
You know, for longest time, talking about gangs, we can talk and talk about the mafia, and we can talk about everything else, we have it here as well. But we had a huge gang, it was called the MS thirteen, it was very, very violent.
The United States created that.
No, it wasn't Salvador, it came here. It went through the prison system.
Yes, the El Salvador cross, they got deported, they got arrested, detained. The game create, culture created here. They got kicked out, they went back to El Salvador.
And came back.
And then they were good grew, and then they came back, but.
But that, but the, but the MS, the MS thirteen. And El Salvador right now, El Salvador right now is one of the safest places. You know, so right now you don't hear that much about MS thirteen, as person, you hear it inside the prisons here. But if they're gonna be shipped to the prison that's over there, it's bad news. I mean, over there, it's a bad, bad news, and these guys are are actors that you can tell right away because of the tattoos that they're wearing, they have to kill somebody, either a friend or a family member, for you to be involved in that gang. It's a pretty serious gang, that's kind of Venezuela, the the Tren de Agua, Aragua gang is worse than that, it's already here. So unfor- unfortunately, those are things that we're gonna have. Right now, our own gangs, I think in Chicago, are gonna deal with them, or they're dealing with them, and they're having problems with them, because Chicago's always been a gang, probably you had the Crips over there, you had, you had the Latin Kings over there and and you know what I'm saying, so.
Little knowledge, I will tell you.
And so that, now they told them, you better stop, so now they're they're fighting. The reason I know about that was because in Irving, because of Sot, there was a truce between gangs and the police chief, and everybody put the band, then in fact, I have one and and it's in a box. And they put it, uh, truth, because they were all training with me. So they all made a truce for a year until somebody killed somebody somewhere else and everything went, it was back in ninety four, ninety five. But none nonetheless, for two years, it was kinda cool.
Well, in Laredo, we have an anti-gang task force, and they're part of our police department. And they are working to keep us safe.
I hope so. But talking about gangs, you know, uh, I'll I'll send you this thing, cause uh, through podcasts and everything else, I'll I'll watch and I'll listen and everything else, and always talking about the cosa nuestra and the mafia and everything else, and there's a gentleman under that used to be one of the bosses from, not a boss, he was not another boss, but underneath them, like a capo regime of the Colombo family. One of the five families of mafia in in New York, at the time during John Gotti's era. His name's Michael Francis, and he wrote a book, it's an interesting book, it's called Mafia Democracy. And he talks about how at his timeframe, when he was a part of that life, cause he's come back, he went to jail, and you know, he's a long story, and I'm not pushing his book or anything, I'm just quoting what book said, it's very interesting, he said, the biggest scam, I said he can have, is parks.
Why?
Cause they're outsourced for contracts. Those contracts, they do whatever they have. While the city has the capability and the manpower to build the parks, and the more parks that you have, the more kickbacks they have into the local contractors. And I was, I was like, and that, and that to me, I was like, okay, so so it's, I'm just saying that, and and I'm like, okay, let's start looking into it.
I I represent twen- over twenty neighborhoods.
Okay, how many parks?
I actually don't have as many, um, but we do have every neighborhood I go to, and and you know, I I go neighborhood by neighborhood, um, parks is one of the number one issues. Residents want to see more improvements in their park, they want better access, better amenities. And it is a a central gathering place for them.
And you know, and.
So when a neighborhood comes up, they're, they either do a a park within their development, depending on how large, or they pay a park fee, and those improvement fees are used to improve parks that are proximally close to them.
Who's doing the construction?
So usually, not always, usually the city of Laredo does it with those park improvement fees.
They should, because that's what you were saying, it goes, the cities have the manpower to do the construction. It's when you start outsourcing the constructions out to everybody. And it's interesting, but you know, when this, I mean, he's, he was, and the, and when, another thing that he says, and he says all the time, he goes, when I, when we're part of the life, those the easiest politicians to to buy, to work with, were Democrats, Republicans were too old, and I was like. You know what I'm saying, I was like, and you know, so he goes on, it's, he he's interesting, I'll say, I'll send it, I'll send you the link, cause it's the book is interesting, when I was reading it and everything else that was going on, I was like, okay, Laredo.
Yeah, yeah, so yeah, the city takes care of the parks.
They should, and the construction.
Yes, or the develop, so this is a little different, the developer of the neighborhood can also develop their own park. They tend to get cheaper prices in the city. And that's from manufacturing, they're like, the people who sell the products, they're like, well, we can charge cities more. Um, but the developer who's developing the land, so it's not outsourced in that sense, um, can do a a park development and then turn it over to the city. But the key is that there is a park for the neighborhood. What the city of Laredo has been doing is trying to tighten up the timeline. Because developers often have several phases of their development, and the park may not be in the first phases. And so, um, we're putting a timeline on when that park needs to be developed. Cause the past has been that, there's some neighborhoods, twenty years later, that still don't have their park.
Yeah, absolutely. That's that's good, that's a good thing.
We're working on it.
And it's not, and it's not about, and it's not about, you guys are doing wrong, you're doing this wrong, and it's about, somebody sees something and says, you know what? Regardless, on myself as well, you know, try to, we always try to improve ourselves, and if, just the way it is.
And we should always be striving for that at the city. You always want to be better.
We want to, you know, I grew up, I grew up in Laredo, and I think, um, doctor, your husband was also, also, remember, there used to be billboards, you say, let's keep the buck in Laredo. And then when I moved over here, about seven years, probably about two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, there were billboards, Laredo's safe, up and down thirty, age thirty five, you're like, why are we shooting ourselves in the foot? People are gonna say, what's wrong with Laredo? With the big old billboard, it's in Laredo's safe, I'm like, well. You know what I'm saying, so we, sometimes the way we brand ourselves hurts us in the in the future. People take advantage.
And I think when people come here from outside, cause I I've probably heard this too, um, they are surprised or pleasantly surprised at how friendly our our community is. How welcoming, how open, and our unique bicultural nature. Because being bilingual, we take that for granted. It is an advantage all over this country.
Over the world.
All over the world. Our kids, if they could understand how powerful it makes them. Now, you do have to um, be able to speak in Spanish and in English, and the. But it's still, the bilingualism is a tremendous advantage, and it makes them more attractive for employment anywhere in the country.
You know, you have, you said something right there, especially with the text mix. That is a dialect that we have.
Yes, it is, it is.
And we better recognize it, that it's a dialect that we have, just like the Cajun Creole French. It's a dialect that they have. And.
This place interesting and unique and and beautiful, and and we need to embrace it.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we're coming out towards a finish and toward the conversation.
Same, same.
And I think that, you know, every everybody needs improvement, I think we all have to move forward. And we have to see what, which ways we can get it done. And not go after fifty million things and, okay, here's what it is, let's 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 get this out of the way. But I think that about the committees is something that we should. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, I think on on council, um, I I'm not afraid of the work. But I think on council, we need to respect the work that our committees do. But I think on council, we need to respect the work that our committees do. And be advised by it instead of ignoring it.
It's, you know, and it's in, it's in a hard period of time because we, like I said. We have a lot of people that have lost faith in our government, both municipal, state, all the way up. And we've, we lost faith in media as well. And we think that everybody is trying to pull us, pull wool over our eyes, and we need to get back down to reality. And we have to understand that what's out there, and we have to understand that there's. A diversity of people and we have to live that way. And only those that have left Laredo and come back can understand.
Yeah.
That diversity, if not.
Yes.
Well, you know, I guess, thank you.
Thank you very much, I really enjoyed it.
It was, it was nice, um. Folks, we'll leave you with this, you all stay safe, be safe, and God bless you all until next time, much peace. Connect.
Thank you.
And uh, you know, Sid, I have to take a picture for the, for the, for the thumbnail.
Well, that was very interesting, very wide ranging.